Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I would be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute their device for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman is delayed. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick is absent. Jose Alcaraz?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right. So first up, we are to have an executive session. What do you think, Jack?
Yes. They're here.
So should we move on to the next application? Okay. All right. So we'll have to move on to the first application, which is 1506 Grand Avenue. Mr. Tilton?
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
So what do we have here?
We have, I guess, are we going to mark the packet or anything? Or just go right into it?
We could go right into it, or we can mark this. We'll go along.
I'll just go right into it. That's fine. Mr. Chairman of the Board, good evening. Richard Tilton, attorney, Allenhurst, New Jersey. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Jackie Bergeron and Justin Theriot. Their property is at 1506 Grand Avenue. It's known as Lot 17, Block 3602. The subject property is 5,000 square feet in size. It's improved with a single-family, two-story residence and a very small garage. It's located in your R1 zone. The applicant seeks to put a one-story addition to the south of the property, to the south of the existing home, and to put a shed to the far south of the property line, removing the existing one, small one garage, one car garage that exists. In connection with the application, we need C-variants for relief. I think your planners' report notes that the property itself is 5,000 square feet. It's 50 by 100. Seemingly, that's not overly unique, but it's placed at the 100-foot of frontage runs along Grand Avenue, and the depth is 50 feet. So there's a 25-foot front yard setback and a 50-foot rear yard setback. So that, right? Am I right?
Twenty-ish, right?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five or 25 average. So that leaves like no building envelope. So almost anything that they want to do on this property would require a trip here for C-variants. So Mr. Passman is our architect. He has prepared the plans before you. If maybe I can have him come up. We'll have him sworn in to go through what's being proposed.
Hi, Don. How are you? Let's have Donald, who is my staff. Do all of these on the survey, the testimony that we've met with, the truth to all of this? Yes, I do. Donald, state your name for the record. Donald Passman from Passman Urqualeen Architects in Ocean Township, New Jersey. Okay. And Donald?
Donald Miller, fourth planner.
Jason Fisher, fourth planner. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I know Mr. Passman's been qualified by this 44.
Yes, he's been here several times. I know Mr. Passman. Please proceed.
Thank you. So, Mr. Passman, if you would, you have prepared the plans. Maybe just give them a quick overview, what's there and what we're doing.
Those plans on the east side? Yes.
Yes.
A1.
A1. And it's a variance plan. I think it's revised through August 31st, 2023.
That's correct. And then it consists of three sheets.
Three sheets.
It's a variance plan for our town. It's our typical.
But I thought we, yeah.
It's a variance. Four.
Right. The title lock had to say.
So the property has a bungalow, two-story house on the property with a porch with battered stone, grilless columns supporting it, one-story porch. Adjacent to the house going to the south, a very small, I don't know how useful garage, we'll call it, but that's what exists.
That garage must have been added at some other point.
Probably. It doesn't have to be because it's detached by about four or five feet. It's of unnatural style. It doesn't have any particular aesthetic about it. Now, the existing house is very small footprint. You can see here, I think it's 700 feet square. Existing dwelling, living area is 898 square feet on foot. It's very small. It was a housing, or addition back to the closet back here, and not very much space in the current situation, especially with a very small kitchen. So I was engaged to create an addition to this house, make it more modern in terms of size. So the plan was to add on to the south side the basement existing, and to create a new kitchen. So what was the kitchen became a study because sometimes there's work at home. There's a front bedroom, existing living room, doesn't change. Front porch does not change, but the addition went straight out to the south. And the reason of the building's width is to get a kitchen with a wiring, if you have some ceiling there, but also to preserve the triple bedroom as a living room.
Eric Neves.
Sorry.
So.
Excuse me for one second, Mr. Passman. I'm sorry. No, you can come right into the council chambers. We started the first application. So Eric, please come into the council chambers. You can sit down, and we're going to finish this. Okay? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Passman.
So in this facade, there was, there's an addition to the dining room, the bedroom in the front did not change. There's a small, there's a small powder room in the back, we turned it for a full bathroom. Kitchen became a study in most ways. And then the addition was a kitchen and then a porch, and steps down to the yard. On the second floor, we added a dormer in the back because it was a dormer in the front and a very small space on the second floor. In that case, we expanded and included the existing bathroom back there. And we changed the stairwell as well because it was very tight. So a lot of improvements on the existing house, but mostly a one-story addition to the south. And that addition is about 18 feet by 15 feet. Now, the roof line, the elevation, is this existing roof line that showed on the south elevation, except as the door where the light window is. And that door led to a balcony, which I refused, didn't want it. But they wanted to preserve that room as either a den or even maybe a bedroom. So in order to preserve a matching window, which it probably was, maybe at some point, I created this hip roof just because I thought it was going to present a report. I wanted to make it very low in height so it wouldn't detract from the main bungalow piece of the house. It set back quite a distance from the front of the house and from the porch, and I preserved a window that matched. There's also some overhead wires that come here that go across the utility pool across the street to what was, whatever those tell us the tides or the single. So there's a wire that runs around. So I couldn't put anything really steep. Couldn't even put a two-story addition on this if I wanted to because of that wires going away. There's a lot of rules to follow. So this roof was created. There's doors that go out to the side porch. The addition, a bungalow over a porch, and then steps that go down to the yard. It's already an existing kind of pergola structure out there already. And then they needed some yard storage so there's a shed that's just under our street. That shed requires a variance because it's going to be five and three. Five would be three feet from the rear and five feet inside because there's this really lovely tree. We moved it further from the rear and got three feet and a little bit more to the side porch. Now adjacent to that, there's a garage, a one-story garage adjacent to the house. So didn't seem to have any impact on somebody's living space. It was a garage structure. So that's one of the variants we asked for. The other variants is because we're mashing the rear property line in order to have this addition match it. So again, we can get a width and we don't interrupt those windows in the living room. Turns out it's just slightly over the building coverage, very enforcing, but it's not 330. It's just slightly over. It just constitutes all the other pieces that we have to add on to the coverage. Then there's the front porch that we're coming from the park. You want to walk right into the kitchen and not have to go back through the living room, which is the main entrance now. Now you go to the front door, drive right up into this little woodwork, and then into the house through the kitchen where you can go down. That's really the addition. There's an existing basement on the house, which is not extremely tall, but it's big. But the addition is on the crosswalk. So there's no additional living space.
Also, I think there was an air conditioning compressor.
Oh, yes. So the existing house has an air conditioning compressor, condenser outside, serving mini-split systems inside. Because of this expansion of the second floor that mattered, I didn't really have very much council work to do with this. I thought maybe it might be a second condenser. So I put it right behind the other one on the side. And not knowing any other place to put it because to the north, there's a property line way close. To the east, the property line's a foot and a half away. And to the south, it's too far away where the unit's going to be serving. We probably would need this to serve kitchen spaces.
Questions?
This is the overview of the deposit board.
Are you keeping the double driveway?
Yes.
So that'll...
The driveway that exists is standard. Which means it's just a concrete slab that rises up the hill and it ends at that a little bit of garage. It's the same, not changing. It's going to be cut into a little bit with the addition, but not very much.
Do you know the depth of that existing driveway right now?
Existing driveway's depth? From the property line, two-foot of the garage is now, it's about 28 feet.
And what's the, what's the new proposed depth?
It's slightly less because of the stairs. It's about 22 feet. So it's big enough for a car before we get to the property line. And then there's the sidewalk. The car can still exist between the property line and those new front steps.
Please forgive me, Mr. Passman. I'm not an architect nor am I a designer. But I'm having a hard time looking at the new design of the house with the addition. It seems like the addition almost looks somehow like there's a chunk of the house missing the way it looks with the addition. The roof line looks so weird to me now. I, you know, I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying it just looks a little bizarre to me.
Is that from the front?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And you understand, I'm trying to accept the concept of they need a bigger kitchen or they need more space in their house, but I, you know, I'm a little conflicted over the look of it.
I'm sorry. I'll go through the blocks. And we have the ceiling height. In that kitchen's going to be the same as the first floor height, so it kind of matches up with it. So it's nice, a nice for ceiling. The choice is, what do I do for a roof on that one-story structure? I cannot make it two stories with that wire up there. It would be a little bit of a problem to get rid of that wire from what my clients have discussed with me. That's sort of a fixed element. Here's a wire sitting 15 feet off the ground. So what do I do with that?
What is that wire? Do you know?
It's an electrical wire that serves the hotel.
Serves to the hotel, yeah.
So it's part of the Saint Laurent?
Well, JCPenney, now, really. It goes over their property, though.
Yeah, that seems a little...
Yes. My, my, exactly.
I mean, I had power lines in the back of my property on Fourth Avenue. When there's no easement, it just runs around the middle of the block. It's JCPenney.
It's JCPenney.
I'm sorry. That's a very difficult...
Did you try, like, designing different looks to the roof line that would... Do you understand where I'm going with this, Mr. Passman?
I have looked at a design with this from the south side view with a roof slope that matches the dormer's slopes, which is about a four and a half on 12 pitch, rather than this pitch, which is like a nine and a half on 12, which definitely can come in contact with the wire. So if I went with this pitch, and I have a drawing of it for you, it reduces this window by another 12 inches, let's say. So it makes this an asymmetric look. But no matter what kind of roof I put on there, I can't put a pitch roof here. It doesn't look right with this bungalow. To me, it was understating what was there and not completely. Try some kind of battered stone column base, add a pergola, and match this really intricate, beautiful design on this.
I'm very concerned of how it affects the overlook of the house itself. And it really kind of detracts, in my opinion. And it's just an opinion, Mr. Passman. I, I'm trying to get there with you, but...
So what I had suggested with the gable was not necessarily changing the pitch you have on your hip, but from that front view, the right-hand end, instead of giving it that hip angle on the end, just, you know, extend the top line to make the A.
Well, it's another thing. I understand. It's a very low pitch. It does not look at that. The gable, that pitch on the gable line, that's why when I do something very low slope, the hips will go to the left because it doesn't give you a very good aesthetic. Now, if you want to change it up, you want to have a different slope.
So I just don't know. So again, from the chair's perspective or other board members when they're looking at that view, you know, there's that disconnect sometimes in your mind that if I see this angle, you know, from this view, but I see this angle on this view, it doesn't always translate. You know, it looks just huggable sometimes. So, did you rock one up?
Let's, we could.
You know, the alternative may be a flat roof that actually extends from the existing house. It wraps in that inside corner. But we can kind of like get compartmented. Let's look at our sketch.
For me, architecturally, it's the, it's sort of the single portico in that it doesn't seem to integrate with the rest of the house.
With the porch.
Because this is a front. It kind of looks like a side or a back door.
It sticks out.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't seem to completely integrate with the, with the rest of the language of the house. I'm...
So what if you wrap the pergola into that inside corner? Cover the new stoop and tie it into the flat of the house? Not as deep, but that would carry that horizontal line all the way across.
Yeah, I think something's missing for me on that horizontal. Yeah.
And those windows are messing with your mind, too, because they're not the same.
And it's not our job to design this for you, Mr. Passman. But we want to help this couple. We are looking for a way to make the house look a little bit more consistent.
Visually, I'm stumbling because something is off, and I have to agree.
Why don't you pass those around? So we can see your...
Yeah, let's see the mock-up for the gable.
So we can, I mean, the point of having this door planned where it's located is trying to get you to keep the kitchen going around the back.
I understand the purpose of it, but it kind of looks like a service door, and we're still looking at the front of the house.
Yep.
Yeah. And it looks like a service door. It looks like the side of the house. It doesn't look like the front of the house.
This is really kind of a pretty house. I've always, you know, kind of admired walking the house. I like the front porch, how it overlooks Grand Avenue, and I think it needs something.
All right. So we tried to mimic from the front porch, right, the supports under the columns. Do you feel that doesn't help that entrance, the kitchen entrance, those column supports mimicking the front porch? Would you want me to keep those?
For me, I don't know why we even need it when we have the stairs so close to the main entry of the home.
So you can treat it like just a regular open porch. It doesn't have to match the front.
Well, those columns are also set much further apart.
Yes.
They're, yes.
And they're chunkier.
And while I appreciate continuing that language, it's, you're building a foundation to lift up a very, you know, cantilever top of the house over there. Those, those columns make sense. They don't necessarily make sense in this application with just a service door.
For the addition.
I don't have any problem with the expansion of the house for the kitchen. None of that's a problem.
That's not our issue.
Yeah, none of that's a problem. It's really a language to make what the new addition to kitchen look like.
It's part of the house integrated and something that's just smack on to the side of it.
And to Donna's point, the windows throw you as well in the addition.
They were, they were put there to match the, simply so as to break the second floor windows and give some additional light into the kitchen.
I definitely agree with the having windows, but maybe, I don't know, one window the same size as what's already on the house.
On the first floor or the second floor?
First floor.
They matched the side of the house.
They would be two more. And so once you shorten it, you have to have a proportion similar. Again, they match a similar proportion to the ones on the second floor because there's a counteratrium.
And they are also matching the side of the house, right? They are also matching the side of the house.
We can, what about a triple with a narrower like width?
Say again?
So do two windows, do a triple with a, like a narrow casement style, the three of them together?
Well, that could be a match to style of the house.
It doesn't, but it might work the, make the proportionality feel better because the three of them make them look skinnier, you know? Because you get more mullion.
Or we could do three skinny double-hundred windows. So at least they're double-hundred to match. The other thing is, you want to go past that, and you want to go to the front door.
Something's off about the two windows.
So the main front door is where clients they've got one, everyone coming in, waiting themselves every day because you're traversing across the living room, which is beautifully set up. See? So the idea is, okay, I'm going to walk into the kitchen. Now, if you don't like this door, it's possible you could have the steps going to the pergola and into that, those doors on the rear on the south side. That would eliminate this door and portico. If the client wants to do that, they can testify that. If they ask that one, they would like it.
The door's not necessarily an issue. It's the steps to them that is sort of grand.
The elevation to get there.
Yeah. I just think, just think it needs to be integrated into the rest of the home. That's all my position is. I'm not sure how to fix it. It just doesn't feel like it.
Make it more of a porch.
Maybe, yeah.
If you remove the door, what would you put? Would you put a third window there? Or you, if you remove the door, would you put a third window there?
I could shift the windows over, for sure, and make it more centered, if you will.
This seems a little more to my liking.
These windows could be centralized.
Can we also talk about this wire? Because I don't know that we should be designing architecture that will hopefully be around for the next 100 years because there's a wire. So is there any recourse from the city we have about potentially looking at relocating? There's nothing we can do.
It's not the cities.
I know, but there's...
It's not a city issue. It's a private matter between the utility company and the property.
And it doesn't feed this house. It doesn't feed the applicant.
I mean, I still don't think you would do something drastic with a roof line regardless of the wire. Because it would interrupt the side. Again, trying to keep this, again, we measure, you're looking at this thing. You're seeing most of this pergola, and you're seeing a roof that basically goes away. Now, again, what per that drawing that was just sent around. That would be a, it's pretty funny. Do something with the portico, it could carry the roof line over that. If you want to stretch the roof line over in plan across a column here and even across here. I wouldn't want to go this way because I'm going to interrupt these three windows, which is a significant architectural piece and also aesthetic to the house inside out. So if you wanted to take this porch and wrap it around here, of course, we're losing some landscaping. We could have the porch wrapped around, and then we could do a pergola that wraps around it. Wouldn't be a solid roof. Which is, again, I mean, this is a solid roof here. It has pergola brackets and design and really beautiful detailing to it. You could cover, cover the same kind of aspect as it is here. And if you just want the flat roof over a portion of it, I mean, it's kind of hard to know where to stop and start this flat roof. Which virtually, this is a flat roof over the front porch. There's not much picture on that. So I'm trying to mimic that as a very low pitch here. It's supposed to look like the pergola. That's what this front portico is to look like. You don't really see that pitch. It's too low. But it's going to drain the water, and it's going to have a detail very similar to the front piece and the rear piece. It has, you know, some detailing to it. That was the whole point with it. And yes, the columns are chunky, but they're not as chunky because it's ridiculous. The columns are spacing, like you said.
I appreciate what you, what you were doing with the columns and the door there. From my perspective, I think removing the columns and removing the door might make it more pleasing from, from my perspective for that front view. I think it, the door, for me, the entire door, not just the columns, is what's throwing it off. And then if you could put the stairs, as you said, coming towards the driveway from that patio, so they have access to the side yard and also the front.
I think the lack of the door makes that wall too plain and, you know, again, facing the street. I think that takes away too much, makes just a plain slab too much, you know, unarticulated wall space. I think it needs the door.
But windows would be replacing the whole unit, the door, the portico, the steps.
We could do a triple window.
Yeah.
And a similar proportion, double up, shift it over a little bit. Because I think the plan, I think it's important. We have this closet, it's a pantry closet here, so that's a solid wall. You got to have equal solid wall here and then space the windows in between. And then we could have, it could almost be like a triple window as literally a small proportion. Window, fat wall in, window, fat wall in, window. But then, then the door, then, you know, the client has to be understanding.
They come into the side.
Donna, from, from an architect, no, we're not architects, so it's got to come from you, you're the designer.
Well, can this work?
It can work, of course. It's functional. It's my client's desire to have the door direct. If they're okay with the steps going up and going into the south side rear entranceway, it's fine with me. But of course, they make these sliding doors that look, you know, super solid. They are lockable and very safe.
I hope your clients understand that. We're not against the, the addition at all. What, what we're trying to do is help it to integrate it a little bit better, actually.
Sure.
And you consider speaking to the electric company about that wire?
I suggest it to my client.
Yeah, we can. I mean, it's impossible to get JCPL to come out. And the client has a subdivision, and their houses aren't even connected to the.
That seems almost dangerous to me that there's a power line above your roof.
Well, it's going to be above the roof.
All right, and we'll reserve across here this way.
Yeah.
This is Ms. Bergeron. Please raise your somerscript testimony about giving this man the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Jacqueline Bergeron.
Ms. Bergeron, there's questions about the electrical wire that goes across?
Yes.
Why don't you tell the board the benefit of your understanding or?
Well, it, so it's actually my understanding. I, I do believe that it only feeds our house. So, um, I'm, I'm fairly certain of that because the, the upper wire that is the electrical wire um, only runs down to the back of our house, which is where our electrical wiring ends up. Um, however, there's all of the cable, um, like Verizon, I think it is, that runs a little bit lower than that. And that feeds the hole in block that goes towards the east. Um, I think the property is along Seventh Avenue, including the hotel, and there's a couple of apartment buildings. I don't know how long, like how far that, those wires go, but they go beyond.
So, if I understand you correctly, Ms. Bergeron, um, the, the electrical part, the JCPL wire is only feeding your house? It is not feeding San Laurent?
I don't have that, that's just from like visual, just looking at where the wires go. Um, they're, they, they don't go any further than that hole that's on the, the property line between us and the hotel.
Have you hired, Donna, are you working with an electrician on this project yet?
Okay, so, go on.
Yeah, yeah. So if it is just supplying your house, that's your, even though JCPL put it in, but that's essentially your.
And you can have it moved.
Your electrician can, and what I would recommend is burying that wire into your house. You're not having to deal with that at all. So your architect is not having design around it. Now, when it comes to.
Well, that's not the one that's really in the way.
But I was just going to say, the cable wire, all of that stuff, which is low voltage, um, that's not a danger to.
No, and those are much lower.
Yeah, overhead. The week, yeah, we can still figure out, you can still figure out what to do with those. Um, but you would, I would think, um, having been through this numerous times, residential properties in Asbury Park, I've been able to bury all of my electric wires coming in. But that's something that your electrician will do.
Okay.
Yeah, they align with JCPL and put in, you know, an application for that. But it happens all the time. I would definitely explore that. Even if you don't want to raise your roof for any reason, but definitely explore putting things under the ground so you're not having to deal with that.
From an architectural perspective, does that solve your roof line issue?
Yep.
Okay. So what, what then would be the purpose from an architectural perspective? Okay, other than just a practical matter?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you would still have the issue with the roof line and?
Well, the roof line could be the one, as I, as I presented, as A2. A2 was submitted and passed around. It changes that one window, but I'm sure that can be done. And we can add the brackets and so forth. But then, on addition to that, when we take away, a client would like that, take away the door into the kitchen, replace that window, have the stairs going to the pergola and end that way to the south. If they're okay with that. I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we have a two-minute break?
Uh, I'd be happy to. I'll, I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Um, Wendy Glassman is currently delayed. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick is absent. Jose Alcaraz.
Here.
John Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Passman.
In our discussion, we've decided. And I will present those drawings. It's an idea which, as we discussed, the stairway that goes to the front door no longer, it will move over. We would access the back covered patio or a porch right here, porch. We have, you know, these, it's like a wardrobe, it's like a place to hang your clothes when you come in. The entrance would be main front door, and then from the south side on the slider. Then we would have three windows packed together with walls in between, centered somewhat between this closet and a blank piece of wall here. So there's some symmetry going on. So you're not, there's no blank wall. As far as columns, we'd have these two over here, which are chunky, but not as chunky as these space far apart. I think that is a visual. Again, the detailing of this artwork, trellis, is similar to what's here. In other words, there's a cantilever of these burgers that come out, another piece. We can match that, which we already can, we can do anyway. But the stairs would reside underneath that cantilever. And I think that will probably take care of that whole situation. Roof line, I would do the roof line, matching the doorway slope with little brackets on the gable end. Match, I did that sketch. So I think it would really improve the aesthetics to your liking.
So, um, Mr. Passman, in order to proceed, we would need to see those drawings. Um, and, which means we would have to carry you to another date. If that's an agreement with your clients.
Regardless of plans, actually.
Yep.
We can't make it subject to.
No, there's too many variables.
Yeah.
I mean, because it could be submitted, you know, after the fact, that you can review on your own without having a formal presentation.
We want you available.
Okay.
No, there are too many variables. If you're talking about one or two minor variables, that's fine. It can be subject to, but all those changes, it definitely works.
What is the date of the next meeting? And we'd be carried to.
Um, well.
So, in terms of getting plans, the next meeting is December 12th.
December 12th, right?
So we would need plans by the 21st.
Right, unless you just want to see them, I don't have to necessarily do a report. This is all subjective for you guys, not necessarily compliance with anything. I'm happy to let them expedite the process.
If that's your agreement, Mr. Passman, Ms. Bergeron, Mr. Thoreau.
What date would you like that to be drawn to?
Well, I guess if we're not doing a review.
It has to be at least 10 days before.
10 days prior to 12/5. Yeah, December 2nd.
That's a Sunday thing.
December 2nd.
Can do?
It's a weekend.
It's a weekend, yeah.
Yes, Jason.
Friday.
So he's here coming.
So for, for stormwater management, this is not a minor or a major.
Right.
The requirement is just to prove that runoff doesn't go to any neighbors.
Right.
And especially considering the increase in the pervious surface, that's something. And, and being a small property close to the property line, that's something we should probably look at. It could be a condition of approval if you wanted to go that route. But since we're carrying, I don't know if there's going to be enough time to do all that. But I'm just throwing it out there that it's something that, that should be addressed at some point, whether it's in the public forum or in residential compliance, it should be addressed.
And I totally agree, um, so.
Well, somebody's got to do, somebody's got to design this.
So for example, the comment was that we don't have topographic information, um, which we did not get from the surveyor. We would be extra for him to do that. And I don't know if he's an engineer or not, that he would have to design the actual stormwater system, but just from a general standard, property slopes completely toward Grand Avenue. Doesn't really seem to go north-south at all. It goes, it'll be west. So we could prove that out with a topographic survey. As far as drainage, there is some existing drains on the east side, close to that other property line, which my client suggested. Existing ones are tied in somewhere to the ties, whatever. But the new ones, we really can design, if you will. One would come down in the back, which we'd have to get it to around, under this.
The driveway, right?
And then it's going to land on the driveway or below the driveway. So that's not even, unless we have to create a drywall.
I think if you get a topographic survey and you show that information on your plan, that would be sufficient.
Show what on my plan?
Well, uh, the, the topography coming from the rear yard to the street will show up on the survey.
Yes.
That'll be good. And then if you can address the water that's behind the house, right? So if it runs off toward the street, the house will trap it. How do we get that water out? If it's going to be, if it's going to be roof drains into a pipe going out to the front, you could put that on.
I'm just trying to figure out how to get it there because there's concrete delay.
Yeah.
So that's going pretty far around.
There's a concrete sluice on the north side of the property line where everything is where it lets draining.
But we can't add to that, I would assume.
Well, it just goes out to the street, so, you know.
Oh, you mean, you mean the stormwater goes out on the north side of the property?
Yeah.
Oh, but I can't get it from the addition.
No, no.
So I have to go around the pergola and drop it and have it continue as a, like an attic to the front, for the daylight.
Or a drop to the drywall.
Doesn't have, with the, with the, with the spot elevations. So, I mean, I can show that, I don't think you can get that done, but.
We, yeah, there's no way that's going to happen.
That can be took off very quickly.
I would be.
But that could be a subject to.
Subject to get us giving it afterwards, but then that's going to happen.
Exactly, Mr. Tilton.
So I, I'm comfortable with being subject to, as long as you understand that if I see something that's no good and you can't work it out, that you might end up back here, but we might have to bring in another professional in the residential compliance process. As long as we can get that water out to the street safely, not affect the neighbor, however that works.
Can, can the drainage from the front of the addition run onto the concrete?
Into the driveway?
Driveway and then slide down into the street. Would you accept that or not?
The runoff from the?
From the front gable coming to the front of the house.
Yep.
Come down the, and drop onto the.
No, no problem there. We don't want, uh, we, we don't want to, uh, create a point discharge across the sidewalk because that will, that could create icy conditions. But if the water's just flowing down.
Sheen down.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. You could run a pipe through the curb, you could do a pop-up of the yard. There's different things.
It's all concrete, that's the problem. Yeah, I know, I understand.
There is a design.
We'll work something out, and we'll get more careful.
As long as, Mr. Tilton, you understand that would be.
We'd rather.
It's what it is, it has to be.
Okay.
And Ms. Bergeron, we were looking at Google Maps, and it looks like your power pole is actually across the street. So forget all, what I was talking about.
Oh, really?
It looked, it looked, well, we just Googled, yeah. It looks like the, the supply pole is coming from across the street.
Mm-hmm.
So burying that under the asphalt would be challenging.
Oh, I see, but it's still running.
It's running across, it's running across Grand and across.
And across our, our line.
Yeah, we, yeah. Uh, we're able to pull a pretty good shot up on Google Maps. And there's, it's, there's a lot going on up there. Very clear on Google Maps.
So we're going to carry this to December 12th without further notice. We can send to an extension.
Yes, of course.
The NOLUW. Uh, we could, no need, we cross these out of the witnesses now because they're customized now.
Mr. Passman's just concerned, I, I thought I understood that all the variance really was discussed. Was there any, I think you said you were fine with everything that we were needing, right?
I don't think that's the issue we have.
Yeah, it was the issue, it was just the design, the architectural design.
My point is that when we come back, as long as we can go over just this elevation and plan of the addition with roof line, we don't have any other things to discuss anymore. And if you like, well, we're, we're usually only reducing some conversion areas. You had the variance for the shed, I don't know if anybody discussed that.
Except the trees in the way.
Thirty percent.
Chairman, I think, you're not listening. The chairman over here indicated that this wall doesn't appear to have any problem with the variances. Are you good? We can't tip our hand any more than that.
And I will join you for your holiday party on December 12th. That'd be good.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to carry 1506 Grand Avenue to December 12th, 2023, without further notice.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you give a second?
It was, it was Dana.
Dana, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any, any of your votes? None?
Aye, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're at a point to, um, have an executive session. I apologize to the other applicant, but it got delayed.
Yep.
Um, so. I will read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting of the board in certain circumstances. And whereas the board hereby moves to close the public hearing and convene in closed executive session in order to discuss with their legal counsel the pending lawsuit filed by Breakwater Treatment Wellness Corporation versus the City of Asbury Park, the Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment and individual zoning board members pursuant to NJES 10:4-12B parentheses seven, which is permitted by the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the determination of whether or not of the discussions will be disclosed to the public is subject to the advice of legal counsel representing the board and its members in the pending legal action. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that it will hereby close the public portion of this meeting in order to convene in private executive session for the reasons set forth above. I make a motion to, for the approval of this resolution.
Second.
Yeah, have you noted for the record Wendy's appearance?
I did, yes.
All right.
So Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz.
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully.
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni.
Yes. All right, so we're going to go into closed session now with our legal counsel, and we're going to move upstairs, so you guys can stay here. All right, so let's get started again, gang.
Okay.
So do I need to make another resolution, Jack, to go back into session, or?
Well, just a motion to go back into.
Okay, all right, so, um, I make a motion to come back from executive session?
I'll second.
Second by Jill. Okay, I'll take roll call. Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
Um, Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis is recused. Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick is absent. Jose Alcaraz.
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully is recused, and Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, so on to Mr. Gaylord and Mr. Worrell, 1201 Bridge Street.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the submissions. We have, they were all proper, we have listed them here.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, uh, let's see. Um, my understanding is you're looking for some C variances, uh, because of your, uh, generally right now because of your pavers, your fence, and your pool equipment. Is that correct?
Hold on, before we do that, let me swear.
Okay.
Please raise your hands. Thomas Wirth.
All of us?
Thomas, where testimony about giving this man the truth, all truth and nothing but truth.
I do.
Starting off with gentlemen, to my left, please state your name for the record.
Peter Gaylord.
Okay, sir.
Dennis Worrell.
Okay. Donna?
Uh, Donna Miller, Ford planning.
Jason.
Jason Fitch, your board engineer.
Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, do they need to be sworn in, Jack?
I do.
Oh, you did, oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Because I can remember who I was.
Okay, um.
It's our pool equipment?
Yes.
Pavers?
Yes.
Um, gas line for our barbecue, fence, and.
So let me understand where, how we got here.
Yep.
Uh, you put a pool in and you had approval for that, correct?
We did, correct.
And you were going to put a fence in, right?
We did put a fence in.
And somehow the fence got into the wrong location?
It is twelve inches further towards Bridge Street than it's supposed to be.
So you're more into what would you consider the front yard of your corner lot?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Um, and why is that? Why did that, how, how did you go about that?
At the corner is the existing gutter for the fence. Um, before we put it in, I went to City Hall and asked because I knew that this was gonna be an issue, and I said, do I move it towards Bridge Street? Or do I move it toward the opposite direction, which makes the installation of the stairs much more complicated? And I was given the advice that it wouldn't be a problem, that, that a matter of a few inches wasn't gonna be an issue, so.
Who said that?
Mary Ann.
So you're saying the zoning officer?
Yes.
Gave you the right to put it a foot into the front or side yard?
Yes.
Do you have that in writing?
I, I know.
Were you exchanging emails or anything?
No, I was.
And you have a permit? Did she issue a permit?
Yeah, I, for the, for the job.
And sometimes when you do that, you have to draw where things are gonna be located? Did she ask for a, a drawing? And only ask because I recently did a wall at my house and I had to do the same thing. I had to etch it out on a piece of paper.
Um, we did, I think that, I don't know whether that twelve inches was, was indicated on there or, or not.
Right, because at the moment that came up, sometimes she would ask on your survey?
Right.
Show where that twelve inches is reflected, that you don't have that where she saw, like, initials it or anything?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that brings us to, you also put your pool equipment in a location that was too close to the setback again?
No.
No, it's in the right spot, we're asking for permission to move it a little bit back because it protrudes into the yard a lot more than we thought it would be.
We.
So we know we need a variance to move it.
So, so it, it's in, it's in the place where you were supposed to put it?
Yes, it is.
And you wanna keep it there?
No, no, we would like to move it a foot and a half toward, towards the fence into the setback, um.
But in the same location?
Yeah, in the same location.
You're not moving it across the yard or anything?
Nope, just push it closer to the fence and a little closer to the house.
So closer to the air conditioning unit?
Yeah, that, that, one of the air conditioning move, units would be moved into the, into the corner.
By the tree?
But by the, behind the tree.
Uh-huh.
And then everything would just get pushed back to condense as much space as possible because we have a very small backyard. We didn't realize in planning how large the heater for the pool was gonna be, and so our patio, there's a rez section, a step, and then a lower section, and the piping and everything protrudes beyond the rez section, so we'd like to just be able to slide it into the corner and make it less noticeable.
Is this the same area where the fence is twelve inches?
No, that, that is the opposite side, um, on the corner of fourth, on the fourth avenue.
Is that by where your barbecue is? That was at the backyard?
No, no, the other corner.
I'm just trying to, with all these pictures, I'm trying to understand where we're talking.
Yeah, may I?
Yeah. Please.
I judge you, we can't.
Is this part of the application photo?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Since you're gonna testify from, let's make it.
Yep, so.
So.
Where the barbecue is?
It's right he, it's right here.
Is that Bridge Street, is Bridge right here?
No, so this is fourth.
Yes.
Bridge Street is that way. So, um.
Like, if I'm standing at your barbecue, which street is in front of me?
If you're standing at the barbecue.
Yeah, I'm barbecuing a hot dog.
You're looking at fourth.
Fourth Avenue.
So to my left then is Bridge?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just needing, because I can't tell from your pic, the picture where.
The overhead plan, I think it might be easier to, uh, fourth. Eight two.
Yeah, so if you're looking at that picture, Jill?
Yeah.
And you're also looking at their layout plan? Where it says ninety-six point seven in the box, in the patio area, that's basically where you're talking about.
It has to be eight two.
Yep.
So.
Eight two, I should.
Fourth Avenue?
Yes.
Bridge Street. Right here is the corner of our house.
Mm-hmm.
The fence is twelve inches.
Those are.
And it's, it's actually, for this meeting, it was drawn in the correct place. So see right there is where the fence is.
Is that a six-foot fence?
Right here is your fence? It's a five-foot fence.
Five-foot solid fence?
Five-foot solid fence.
And so it protrudes partially into the one, what we would call a front yard, right?
Yes, correct.
A, a, as a corner lot, you understand you have two front yards, right?
Thank you.
For the fence standards, they're allowed to put the fence on a corner lot, it's allowed to be up to six feet high and solid from the rear building line.
Understood.
So that corner where you're talking about, he's just slightly in front of the rear building.
So we put him, they put him like a big round gutter right there, so.
That's, that's the point of conversation.
I understand, I understand. So, and then you wanna move the pool equipment into the, into one of the side setbacks, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, and then you're going to enclose the, the equipment, or are you just moving it?
No, we, we, we're probably gonna plant some shrubs, so it's a little, so it's less.
And how close is that to your neighbor?
So the fence, we still have about approximately a foot and a half of property before our neighbor's property.
By your driveway.
So, no, their driveway, um.
So the, the reason why it, it, we try to keep mechanicals like your pool equipment is so that it doesn't bother your neighbor, right? The sound of the, the bubbler, the sound of the condensers, the sound of all that can be annoying to your.
Yeah.
Neighbor, right? So you understand that's why we have setbacks?
Totally understand, but the equipment is.
So why is it necessary to move this equipment?
We're moving it two feet closer.
But why is it needed?
Just because it protrudes into our backyard and it doesn't look nice, and we have a corner that.
But, but that's where it's supposed to go, Mr. Gaylord, so I, I'm trying to understand why you need to move it.
We don't, we, we don't need to move it, we'd like to move it for aesthetics.
For aesthetics?
Yes.
But then by doing so, when we push everything, it's closer to, if I'm facing your house on Bridge, your neighbor to the right is more, could possibly be more impacted by all the equipment because it's closer both, in both directions to them.
Yes, it's a foot and a half or two feet closer.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it's brand new equipment.
But, so, so did you ask your neighbor about perhaps moving your equipment closer to their property?
Yes.
Dinner with them last weekend and they had no issue with it.
Okay, so.
I would have came to the.
That, that, that would help us make our decision, Mr. Gaylord? If, if you could have them testify that they weren't upset by the fact that you're, you're potentially putting something that could be noisy next to their.
Yep.
So that helps in our decision process. Uh, th- this is the reason why we have setbacks, is so that your neighbors, all of us have neighbors that we don't want to inflict anything undue to, to, that they shouldn't have to endure.
True.
Understand?
Absolutely.
So whether it's water intrusion, whether it's sound intrusion, whether it's light intrusion. So in order to help us make these decisions, it would be better for you either to have some type of affidavit signed by them?
No, no, no.
No?
We can't cross examine.
No.
They would have to be here.
Then they would have to come.
And they've chosen not to be here tonight.
Yeah. They, they were, were notified, like they.
Yeah, but that doesn't help us, right? So what I'm trying to tell you is.
Well, to their, to their point, the lack of appearance is indicative they don't oppose.
I mean, I mean, I, I know.
No.
You don't have to leave me, but honestly, they were gonna come tonight, but one of them had a board meeting and she couldn't make it, she said, if we really needed her to come, she would come.
Like, I can call them and ask them to.
No.
Get up, bed and.
No, they're not, they're not on.
But if we need to have them come in, they will come in, and they will.
Do, do you understand that, that helps us make our decision?
Totally.
And then, you know, and it's easier for us to say, okay, um, your neighbors don't have an objection.
And, and the last time we were here for the renovation of our house?
Yes.
Nancy, our next door neighbor, came and testified.
And that was a few years ago, I, I, I remember, Mr. Worrell. Um, so that would help us decide whether we agree to move your equipment. Um, as for the, the fence situation, uh, uh, it's not egregious, right? But, you know, I'm not, you, you understand that it's still a foot into the front yard, but, okay, uh, I, I don't know how the other board members feel.
Are they allowed to have a solid fence?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So I, I think what he said was that there's, um, existing, uh, elements in, in the house on that corner, like there's the railing coming down, had the railing coming down, but now there's a, it's the corner, there's a drainage pipe, there's the window.
Yeah, so there's the gutter at the corner of the house, and then there's a bracket for a shelf under the windows, and the fences right next to that, um.
Because you couldn't get it, it had to be, um.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that, then it comes to your pavers, right? You, you, you have yet to install pavers, correct?
We installed, per the original plan, um, pavers that comply with the setback, so not going beyond the edge of our house, um. So that, like, there are pavers around the pool.
So you did put the pavers in?
We, we put, let's call it phase one, we put the pavers that we were allowed to do by regulation, and now we're coming asking, can we extend?
Is, is, are, have you gone over your lot coverage?
We have not.
And that's why they did only as far as they did.
Okay, but, but they are planning to increase.
They're asking for permission to do more.
Right, and my understanding is because we're going into the setback, that's what we need permission to, but we're not, we're not over the amount of coverage that we can have on our lot.
Will you be, once you do the new pavers?
No.
And what type of pavers are these?
They're, uh, twenty by forty.
Are they permeable pavers?
Um, they are not, um, right now the sand that's in them is impermeable, but the contractor said he can remove that and put per, like, regular sand in, it's built on a permeable base.
They have a lot of square footage left before they'd be over the impervious coverage.
Yeah, we're really just adding pavers to put a dining room table on, and then where, it's just a setback. A little bit behind where the fence is to just push our chase lounge chairs back a little more, I mean, we're adding, uh, very, very few.
It's like thirteen by the, by the width of the.
Would there be a problem, Jason, with, uh, water infiltration or, or the stormwater management, or?
Well, I mean, if, if they're under the coverage, then I don't see an issue. Um, as long as we're on the topic of, of drains, the one thing, we did, we made a comment in our letter about topography overlapping onto adjacent property.
Uh-huh.
There's topography on the property, there's existing and proposed information, but what we don't have is what's on the neighbor's property. You know, in other words, does their property go to the property line and up to the neighbor? Or does it keep going down to the neighbor? So there should be some topography overlap onto the neighbor's property. And again, that could be part of residential compliance if it gets to that point, or it could come back, but that's something that should be addressed.
Okay, I, I, I agree. So. I don't.
And then there was one other thing, which is the gas line for our barbecue.
And?
And that, because again, it's beyond the setback, we need permission to have it.
Again, it, does that affect a neighbor?
No.
It does not?
It's, um, it's on the Fourth Avenue side.
Okay.
Inside the fence.
Inside the fence.
I get it, I get it.
All the way in that corner, is it staying there, or is that just where it was rolled for the picture?
No, that's where it's staying.
Okay.
So you, you would have to put an underground?
Yes.
Gas line?
Mm-hmm.
So just a question, are you replacing all the grass in this picture with pavers? Is that what you're proposing, or where are the pavers going to go?
About half of that grass, to the, the right side.
In, may. In the application, we applied to replace it all. After we, we, like, after we started this process and, which was before everything was in, we've re, since realized that we really just want it, want to have about two-thirds of that kind of, um, that, where that flat level is around the pool, that's what we'd extend, um, into the setback.
Wait a minute, so, so the plan shows a dimension of five feet, seven inches, no, five point seven feet, so about five and a half feet.
Is that on page?
Between the edge of the pavers and the property line on, with the neighbor on Fourth Avenue.
Yes, and that.
That's five and a half, so you're basically a five and a half foot strip of grass between the pavers and the fence. Does that help?
And then.
And then there's another area. Or is that, because there's, in your plan on page five of Donna's report, there's two areas for patio expansion. Is that where the equipment is now that you want to expand your patio?
Um, no, it's, so if you're looking at the pool, um, towards the, the fence, like, towards the fence on, um, our Bridge Street neighbors, we just want to, on that flat level, extend it's like three feet so that the pavers touch. Uh, no, it's the other side.
That we don't have a photo of?
Um.
Where the tree is.
Where the tree is, right.
Where the equipment is.
I thought the tree is with.
Yeah, so it's, it's basically to the, the area to the left that we don't have a photo of.
Right here?
Um.
Like in front of, I'm having a hard time understanding what this is.
So we can explain this better.
Um, again, if I can.
But the trees were.
Show you on the.
I'd prefer to know from one of these photos.
It's, it's the area, not on those photos, it's the area.
It's in front of the equipment, between the equipment and for that.
This is the, this is Bridge, this is the neighbor's on Bridge.
So the equipment's up against the house, and then from the, from the area from the equipment, where the equipment ends, to Fourth Avenue, that little.
Right, that seems to be a photo that's missing.
Yes. We're just out of frame.
I, am I able to email a photo at this moment? Because I literally have a, a picture from this afternoon with my dogs in that area Because I literally have a, a picture from this afternoon with my dogs in that area of the yard.
I'm gonna suggest maybe we come back, Mr. Worrell. Um, and you could potentially have your neighbor here who can help explain that he or she is not unhappy with where you might put your pool equipment. And that will help us move on with this application. And, uh, if, if that, both of you agree, would be a good solution to this?
Yep.
I have another question. Was this approved with one?
Had a problem, they showed up and talked about it, which, you know, by default with them not being here complaining, it was implied that they were okay with it. But if they have to come back, we'll have to come back.
I, I, I think you, as, as, as good faith, maybe help us a little bit, Mr. Gaylord. Do you understand? How, how, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that. Yes, but you also mentioned, or Mr. Worrell mentioned, that they couldn't be here because they had another board meeting. That's a little different than saying that they didn't have a problem, right?
If they had, telling you, we went out to dinner with them last weekend, like we do all the time, and we talked about it, and they said they had no problems.
Yeah, that's...
Understood.
However, if the neighbor does not come at the next meeting, that's not evidence that they're against the project.
They will, they will come to the next meeting.
They will.
They will. They will come.
Yes, they will.
Yes.
Then good, okay.
They will come to the next meeting. If we can get on the next schedule, we'll do that. We're not planning to do this until the spring anyhow, so it's not that big of a deal.
I understand, yeah.
Could...
Yeah, I have another question. It's about the driveway. So how was this originally approved? With one, with a driveway for one car or for two cars? And is the fence blocking the driveway?
The fence is not blocking the driveway. Um, it's a one-car, it's always been a one-car driveway.
There, when I bought the house in two thousand and four, the driveway, we made it a little shorter. But it's on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, because in this, in this, um, layout, you can see that driveway going behind that fence, right?
No, it doesn't.
No, it butts up against it, or stops short of it, I believe.
Yeah, there's like a couple feet between where the driveway ends and the fence starts. If you're standing on Fourth Avenue.
Perhaps you could take some more pictures, too?
Yes.
So that it will help the board. Um, it, it seems like there are too many questions regarding, as you understand, for us to really have, have a complete understanding of your backyard.
Yep.
Like, if you could get a photo of that twelve inches that we're talking about, about the, you know, the fence?
Everything to help your, your, your application, Mr. Worrell.
Because it's hard to, like, I know your house, I walk by there frequently, I live around the corner. I just, even though I know your house, I can't place some of these things. So when you show it to us, it makes it just that much easier.
Yep.
Okay, so why don't we make sure we ease the line down the walking route to bring back?
Okay.
To Jason's comment, please make sure you give Jason what he's going to do for the water. Additional photographs to do, clear the picture. If possible, bring back a neighbor, testify, very briefly. Uh, what else?
Additional photos for the, that second patio. Um, where I guess if I'm looking at your pool, it's to the left side, on the Fourth Avenue side.
Yeah, so there's, uh, the large extension on the Fourth Avenue side, which is about thirteen feet. And then on the Fifth Avenue side, it's a three-foot extension. So, yeah, we'll have both of those.
Okay. Anything else?
Anyone else?
Can you question better with the topographical? If, if, if it needs to be there, I don't know.
We provided a survey, I think it's by the Morgan survey department.
No, it was, uh...
Jensen?
Yeah, that's an engineering plan. He has, he has the policy on there, you, uh, Morgan surveyed this guy. The Jensen plan is gonna draft in a survey, it'll be out here somewhere. We need a copy of this.
Yeah, Leifer.
Who is it?
Leifer Lambert.
Okay. We need a copy of that. It's general number three on the Jensen plan, where the, the topographical survey is from, Leifer Lambert. You need a copy of that, and they need to extend the topography onto your two neighbor wall, three. Two or three, basically your two property lines that are not streets. That's gonna extend out to their property.
How far?
Ten feet will do, something like that.
Okay.
And did you need anything with the gutters and the drains and...
Well, the, uh, the downspouts would be good to know, to see where the water's gonna hit the land and go. Um, if, if the neighboring properties are pitched to you, then it kind of doesn't matter. As long as the water gets out to the street, the topo's gonna guide us when we get it.
Oh, the, the, yeah, the, uh, downspout in the back goes away towards Fourth, under the fence. It's nowhere near our neighbor's property.
Yeah.
As long as you can provide the, any, any data or any, anything factual to help us make our decision, Mr. Worrell.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, it, it makes that much simpler, right?
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we're gonna have to make a, a motion to carry this. Um, I'm thinking January now.
So the, the ninth is the reorg meeting, and then the next meeting is one, January twenty-third.
So I think we could probably do this on the night of the reorg meeting.
Yeah.
This, this shouldn't take that long.
Okay.